For the April 7th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment Agency, we're going to begin tonight as we do each week with a Pledge of Allegiance. We'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight will be led by J.B. Bescharian.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, nation under God, indivisible, with all the great and justest of honor.
The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our legal counsel regarding two cases of existing litigation, Watson versus -- Watson and Hamilton versus the city and Stube versus the city. The case numbers are referenced in our closed session agenda, and no action was taken. Brings us to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the city council. This is -- although the council is prohibited by state law from taking up items that are brought up under item 1A, it is an important time for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available at the front door and turn it into the city clerk. Front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. And we also recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can involve a little bit of anxiety, so we ask that there not be any boos, or cat calls, or applause, and that we maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart that shows which agenda item that we're on at any one moment. All right, so with that, we do have a couple of requests to speak under item 1A, and the first is by Ben Davis Jr.
Ben Davis Jr., and thank you for the opportunity to address you. At the last meeting that I attended, I discussed some information that I wanted to get from the city and from the state also, and I want to -- I'm here tonight first to thank the city for complying, and complying so promptly. Your staff handled it excellently, and it's always nice to work with them when they do. I got the information that I wanted, and more so, as you recall, I wanted to find out why it was that the state denied us first-time homebuyer funds by such a slim margin of less than 1%. It seems your staff went further and asked them for a breakdown of why we were denied, and I'm going to support that request and ask -- I've been told that I will get a copy of the response when the state does respond to that, when Home does. So I was very pleased with the outcome of that. Also, looking over the material, which I've just begun to sift through, I noticed something that I'd like to bring to the attention of the council, which says that only about three-fifths of the money that was requested from local agencies or local jurisdictions from the state was granted this year for first-time homebuyers. There's a lot more requested, or a significant amount more than requested than was given, and that's why we were denied. And to me, that's absolutely astounding, given the economic problems that this nation is having right now with home buying in particular. With first-time home buying could be a significant boost to our economy and should be one of the absolute first things funded by the federal government. So I would like to find out more about why it isn't, and I'm not sure exactly how to go about this. I'd often use my federal representatives and ask them to check into it, how is it funded, and why is it not receiving more, given the promises that I heard on such things during the last campaign and the economic crisis we're going through. I might look through that, and depending on where it leads me, I might ask for your support in looking into it further, getting answers to that. I do want to add one short -- another thing with the minute I have remaining, rather than take up another opportunity to speak on your homeless issue, I found the same issue there. Again, they were talking about three levels of income: low income, very low income, extremely low income. They left out no income. But crucial to this effort to end homelessness in our county is finding homes for these people. And again, why aren't we giving money for the people that need homes in a time when our economy is being driven by a lack of home sales? It just doesn't make sense, given all the things I heard. I was astounded to read these things. I thought certainly these things would be funded if we're bailing out institutions that are basically rich in comparison. So I'm going to look into that a little more, and if I'm able to find the time to come down here, as I have in the past, I'll try to give you an idea of what I found on those things. In the meantime, I want to thank your staff and you for responding to my last request, and I'll let you know what I find out from those things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill Lowell.
Thank you.
Mr. Lowell, the microphone was on when Mr. Lopez was talking, but I -- it's hard to -- is your microphone on now?
Oh, okay. Testing, testing.
There you go.
I guess it wasn't on before. Sorry about that. Okay, no, I'm sorry, I just thought I was talking loud enough, I thought -- but anyway, I'll be here tomorrow for the Yolo Bus groundbreaking ceremony, and I just wanted to reiterate or make sure that we will finally have a no-smoking ordinance in effect with our new shelters and so forth, and if not, why -- then they should -- action should be taken to implement it as soon as possible, and we should reutilize the old shelters in places where maybe they're not used as much, but still, people need protection from the storm, and instead of replacing them, instead of replacing that broken glass or plastic, let's start replacing that with that heavy metal screen stuff they're using on the new shelters. That's the way regional transit has been doing it for several years. So -- but at the same time, we want to make sure the seating is a little further away from that heavy screen, so that when we get that stormy rain, we still have protection from the storm, in that manner of speaking, too. But anyway, I will let it go at that for now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, John Bescharian.
Sorry, but I'm here to say thank you for the efforts that everyone has put forth thus far in trying to keep our Bright Postal Annex open. I brought something this evening from the A&amp;GAN website, and on the second page, a letter I received dated April 5th from the Postal Service regarding our branch. And this is after the Congressman Thompson came and looked at the branch on the 2nd. And in fact, on the backside of that, there's a small email that I sent to his district representative, Ellie Fairclaw, in Woodland. Basically, what it appears to be is that they're kicking the can down the road a little bit, as far as making a decision, and I'm glad that we are not under immediate order for closure, but we're still under the sword of Damocles, if you will. The only way we're ever going to be comfortable is if this becomes a historic site and used for that building. And I don't know how we can accomplish it, but I hope that there are people out there that care enough about this community to try and do it for us. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bescharian. Those are the only requests we have under item 1A. I did also have a conversation with both Congressman Thompson and Ellie Fairclaw from his office about this issue, and he was very active in intervening on behalf of the post office and the Postal Service. Although the -- I know the letter that you've received, we've got the same letter, indicates that what they've done is sent their recommendations to, essentially to headquarters. I think we have pretty -- every assurance that that recommendation is going to be accepted, because it was headquarters that asked for that recommendation to come to them, that the Bright Post Office remain open, and it is directly the result of the continued advocacy in the neighborhood and the community, raising the profile of the little post office, both in our own community and to the level of Congressman Thompson, and then his direct involvement. My understanding from the Postal Service exec -- folks in DC was that it made a big difference to have him weigh in so strongly on behalf of the post office. And so, no, the folks in the neighborhood and community have been sending him letters of appreciation. I know we ought to do the same thing, thanking him for weighing in to -- on what must seem like a little issue in his congressional district that stretches all the way to Oregon, but that obviously is a, you know, makes a big difference in the Bright neighborhood. So that will -- I mean, that -- nothing is safe forever, but it's a -- but it does remove it from the whole process of the ongoing reductions that the Postal Service is undertaking. Mr. Kristoff.
Quick comment. Yeah, I also had -- matter of fact, John Bescharian asked me to get a hold of Ellie and to get a hold of Congressman Thompson, and so followed through on that, and I just wanted to thank John and a lot of the neighborhood group over there, especially the Broderick-Bright group, they've just sort of rallied behind that whole issue, and it's not only them, but members of the community who are not members of the Broderick-Bright group are very appreciative of the fact that the office is going to stay open for a little while longer, and, you know, there's some other angles that I think we're going to pursue as far as process and things like that go, and so, I mean, I think that I've had some good conversations with the -- with our Congressman, and I concur with what the mayor has said, and that is, you know, he got involved, and all of a sudden, things really start happening, and it's very, very appreciative, and I would like to be signatory to a letter that goes to Congressman for helping us. So, thank you.
Yeah, been a good Congressman and a former postmaster on the city council. One-two punch, it's been very effective, so thank you. All right, that brings us to item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Johansson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Housing Development Corporation met on March 18th, and aside from routine issues, one of the issues they're going to be looking at is a program to -- it's a program that uses stimulus money actually to allow low-income folks in some of the properties to apply for grants for new energy-efficient windows, bathroom fans, and CO2 monitors. So, and as an enticement, the tenants are going to be given new microwaves. So that is one of the programs that the Development Corporation is looking at, in addition to working with Jon Stewart, to continue to move to increase the -- or decrease the vacancy rate. And we're actually doing well. We've got a couple of properties, patios to castillos is 13% vacant now, but we're looking at different ways to either defer deposits or defer -- have deposits paid for the longer term in order to get some of the folks in there. But there's very little capacity right now with that organization, as other organizations to do much more than just maintain the properties that they have under their control.
Other reports or communications? We did have the SACOG five-year anniversary summit for the blueprint on Friday at Sac State, and I had the privilege of emceeing the event along with the current chair of the SACOG board, and lots of good information. We'll try to get the PowerPoints and the maps and stuff for the council. But Mr. Johansson was there, Mayor President V. Agus was there as well. West Sac showed quite well. I mean, they did a roundup of sort of smart growth, blueprint, livability, sustainability style projects throughout the region. They wanted to cover all 22 cities and all six counties, and, you know, a lot of them, well, not a lot, but a good number of them were -- and City X has adopted a specific plan, you know, for some particular part of the city. And it took up a quarter of a slide in a power form presentation, and then, when it came to West Sacramento, it was, you know, it was, I think, three or four complete full slides long of presentations on the Bridge District, on the College Library Transit Center Streetcar community center project across the street. It was -- there's stuff all over the city. It was very impressive. It was annoying to most of the other city people, but it was a really good showing for West Sacramento, and I think there were 800 people there, so it was a good forum in which to be showcased as one of the leading-edge communities in the region on the issue. So it was a very -- I was -- I know we were all proud, those of us that were there from the city were very proud of how we -- how the community displayed at that event. Right, item 1C is appointments for boards and commissions. We have none, so we'll proceed to item 2, which is the presentation of a proclamation celebrating the grand opening of the new Langer Hall at the Sikh temple. Is there a motion? It's been moved by Mr. Beers and seconded by Mr. Kristoff. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries. We've asked Councilmember Johansson to present the proclamation on behalf of the city council.
Well, this is really a monumental event for the Sikh community in not only West Sacramento, but the region. For those of you that are watching this, the Historical Society, a number of months back, did a presentation on the Sikhs in the area. It was a very well-attended exhibit. The Historical Society also has photos on their website, so for those of you who have a chance to take a look at this. But this proclamation is from the city council. Whereas Sikhism originated in the Punjab region in northwest India five centuries ago, and today, there are approximately 25 million Sikhs worldwide, making it the world's fifth-largest religion. And whereas the Sikh Americans constituted a well-established religions, social and ethnic group among the people who have immigrated to California and the United States of America, and whereas Sikh immigrants have added to the American culture and continue to maintain their own culture and traditions. And whereas the Sikh Temple of Sacramento, which serves as a place of worship for the majority of the Sikh population residing in the greater South Sacramento area, came into existence in October 1981. And whereas a committee recognizing there was need for Sikhs to congregate and pray arranged to have prayer services in people's homes and later in rented facilities. And whereas approximately two acres of land with a church building was acquired and remodeled to serve the Sikh population in 1983. Whereas an additional two acres of land was purchased in 1991 to build a newer and larger prayer hall to accommodate religious services for the fast-growing congregation. And whereas the building in the back of the Gwadwara was purchased in 2003 and renovated for use during the construction of the new Langer Hall, which is now complete. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of West Sacramento congratulates the Sikh Temple of Sacramento on the occasion of the grand opening of their new Langer Hall, which I believe is April 18th.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you like to speak? Good evening. Thanks, Mark Johannesburg and the city council. Thanks for giving us this nice piece of paper, so that'll be the history. And we thank all the staff, all the building department, they have cooperated. We started this construction last year in April and finishing in April, and that's about $3.5 million project, 26,000 square feet. In this economy, and that's money was donated, collected, plus the loan, and if you look at it, so we created some jobs, some income for the city, property tax will come in more, and sale tax income. With this $3.5 million, the products we bought it to build the building. And again, thank you very much. And Mark, thanks in a short time for prepared this thing, and we appreciate, and I send the invitation. And I send the invitation to all the council members. I hope they can come in. I invited in last couple of months, made a few efforts to reach to the mayor, but these look like pretty busy, so I hope see them over there, and will appreciate to see them. On 28th March, 28th March, and West Sacramento Police Chief Dan came in and spoke a few words to the congregation, and we appreciate all the efforts you were there on Sunday, and thank you again, all the members. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Just a -- thank you. All right, we're going to proceed to item 3, which is the consent agenda, items 3 and 4. We have a couple of requests to speak under item 3. So, item 3 is a consideration of adoption of the Yolo County Tenure Plan to Prevent Homelessness, and we have a request by Janice Kritlow, representing the Homeless and Poverty Action Council.
So, thank you for your -- and then, Agent Page, you had pointed little job, I'm Joe Baker, so this is however, you said, in order to complete the executive mission.
Do you know if the other cities made their appointments yet? Okay, great. Thank you. And Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Willie Lowell, again for the record. And I want to make sure these new or refurbished homes we're building have the wheelchair accessibility, and I think most of them should be smoke-free. That is, this kind of smoke, if they're going to be smoking, they should maybe design a little patio room on the outside where they can go outside. Sometimes you see these multi-story apartment units that have these little sun rooms or sun decks, and those could be used for that kind of thing, but so that the rest of the population doesn't have to inhale that secondhand smoke. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell. Those are the requests needed to speak on this item, and if there were no questions or comments on item 4, the minutes? Then we have the consent agenda. Did you want to say something on item 3?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think we've talked about this homeless plan a number of times as a draft has come up in a number of different forms, but really what this is trying to do is get at homelessness before it starts. It's kind of like healthcare, you want a little preventive healthcare in order to reduce the larger costs if healthcare is not provided. And really, it's also been a very good exercise in how to coordinate county services more effectively with this triage system that's going to be instituted as part of the, kind of the umbrella of this effort. And to be able to track the folks throughout the system, throughout the different departments, and their cases basically would be able to follow them, and to use the services that are going to be available even more effectively. Yolo County is probably going to go through more budget woes, in fact, they are going through more and more budget woes, and the last thing that we want to do is to ignore the homeless, because we -- West Sacramento really has the majority of homeless in Yolo County. So I'm looking forward to the implementation of this and to really see how our services can be effectively used, reduce the redundancies, and create a more efficient provision of services, and also working with the homebuilders and developers to continue the supply of very, very low-income housing for the long term, and not transitional housing, but long-term housing, and also the ability to keep these folks in those, so they'll come homeless. So I think it's really an exciting project, and looking forward to it.
All right, with that, we have the consent agenda before us. Moved by Mr. Beers, seconded by Mr. Johansson. No further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. That brings us now to our time sit agenda. Item 5, which is a public hearing to consider adoption of resolution number 10-20 confirming the diagram and assessment of ordering improvements for maintenance to be made to the landscaping and lighting district number one. Mr. Thompson.
Gotcha. Okay. Can you hear me a little better now? Okay. I apologize. Although the assessments have been frozen since 1996, the cost to maintain this haven't. And we estimate that the general fund may have to subsidize this for about $310,000. Last year, we budgeted the same amount. With that, I'll wrap it up, and we're just requesting that you conduct a public hearing, approve the report for 2010 and 11, and adopt resolution 10-20.
All right, are there questions, Mr. Thompson? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on item 5. We don't have any requests to speak, but it is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and return to the council. It's been moved by Mr. Johansson, seconded by Mr. Kristoff. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. Item 6 is a public hearing to consider adoption of resolution 10-21 confirming the diagram and an assessment for the storm drain maintenance district number one, railis landing. Mr. Thompson.
The -- this particular storm drain area feeds into a pump station in the Ziggurat Garage, covers about 100 acres. It was cut off from Reclamation District Gate 11 and 900 by railroad levees, and has been in place since 1964. The district was formed pursuant to Storm Drain Maintenance Act of 1937, and like the lighting and landscaping, the act requires an annual budget adoption and a corresponding property assessments. Assessments have been frozen since 1996, therefore, we are not asking for an increase. The budget is considerably lower than lighting landscape, we're budgeting $13,617. The assessments basically are $144 per acre. If there is any subsidy at all, it would be negligible, and it would come from the general fund, probably under $3,000. With that, we're asking that you conduct a public hearing, approve the report for 2010 and 11, and adopt resolution 10-21.
All right, are there questions, Mr. Thompson? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on item 6, and we have one request to speak, and it's by Mr. Lowell.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Willie Lowell, again of West Sacramento, for the record. On the comment, that first phrase, "all property inside the city limit as storm drainage protection by reclamation districts," but that sounds all well and good, but some of our streets don't have storm drains in them, and so it's a relativity to -- between the street and down to the sewer line, and they would be made of not metal, but the plastic, which would survive the, what do you call it, the rotting out that the chrome metal in our house is subject to. But, yeah, we need more storm drainage on our streets. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell. That will close the public hearing on item six. Mr. Thompson?
The three reclamation districts that you're referring to are 537, 811, I mean, 811, and 900. 900 is probably what covers Mr. Lowell's properties, the biggest one within the city. I discussed this possibility with the Public Works, Greg Fadman at Public Works, that Mr. Lowell may have a particular problem with. And he suggested that a call, he would personally take care of it if he were to do that. However, the comment really, I don't think, is applicable to this particular hearing.
Okay. All right, this item is exclusively and solely about the Rayleigh's Landing assessment, which is the only thing that's in the jurisdiction of the city council. The reclamation district services are run by independent boards. Okay. All right, any further questions or discussion on item six? It's been moved by Mr. Beers and seconded by Mr. Johansson. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing done. That motion carries. Item seven is a public hearing in consideration of resolution 10-15, resolution of vacation of public right-of-way easement adjacent to Tower Bridge Gateway. Mr. Blumberg?
Tonight's staff requesting that the city council hold a public hearing on the proposed vacation of public right-of-way that is located on Tower Bridge Gateway in the proximate location of former Second Street, adjacent to the River One development site. Following the public hearing, staff is recommending that city council adopt resolution 10-15, which will approve the right-of-way abandonment. This action will allow implementation of the land exchange agreement with the Rayleigh's Corporation, which was approved on March 3, 2010. Once the abandonment process is complete, the underlying fee will be conveyed to Rayleigh's in return for the city receiving a portion of Rayleigh's property fronting Third Street, which is necessary for the Tower Bridge Gateway East Phase Improvement Project. That concludes staff recommendation.
All right, are there any questions for staff at this time? All right, then we will open the public hearing on item seven, and we do have one request to speak by Ben Davis, Jr.
Hi, Ben Davis, Jr., and thanks again for the opportunity to speak. I want to note that nobody told me my microphone was off when I was up here earlier. But I think you can all hear me now. I guess you could hear me earlier, you would have said something. I'm going to object to this project being adopted. I'd like to see you not adopt it. I attended the hearing March 3 on the overall project, of which this appears to be a part to me, and I explained that I thought the various projects were being taken up piecemeal as opposed to as a whole, and that, in fact, there could be large environmental-induced growth impacts from the projects as a whole. This is a small piece of it, but it does say in the description of the project that it is necessary to the overall development and could delay projects and could have a negative impact on the project as a whole, which, in my estimation, could have a positive impact on the environment. I noted that in, on this agenda item, it didn't mention any environmental review of this particular piece of the project. As far as I can, I believe that this is a project subject to SEQA, and that there should be some form of environmental review. I understand why there's nothing in the agenda. Perhaps there is, but if there is, you're not voting on it tonight. I'd like that explained, as a matter of fact. If you could have your staff explain to me why this doesn't appear to be categorically or statutorily exempt. There's no negative declaration, no environmental review of any kind. I realize it might be covered under other environmental documents on related projects, but still, I would assume it'd have to be incorporated into this as a project unto itself. So, I'm going to object to you adopting this on that grounds. Thank you very much.
All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing on item seven. Mr. Blumberg?
Yeah, Mayor, we could respond to the issue with regards to the SEQA approvals for the project. The property in question is being acquired for the Tower Bridge Gateway East Phase Modification Project. The addendum to the mitigated negative declaration for that project was approved in February 2009. So, the SEQA approvals for the project were approved.
Okay. Further questions or discussion? It's been moved by Mr. Beers and seconded by Mr. Johansson. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing done. That motion carries unanimously. Item eight is workshop and campaign contribution limitation ordinance. Adam Clark?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As the council knows, the city's existing campaign contributions limits ordinance has two key elements, one being the dollar limit of $250, and the other being that if a candidate contributes greater than $2,500 of their personal funds to their campaign, then the limit for other candidates in the same race is then raised to $500. Since the adoption of the code, the Supreme Court has ruled that the restriction of contributions of a candidate's personal funds is unconstitutional, and additionally, that any asymmetrical contribution limit is also unconstitutional. This ruling necessitates an amendment to our ordinance, and council is tonight being asked to review the ordinance and provide direction to staff regarding the options presented to you in your report. Any questions?
All right, are there questions or discussion?
So, I guess what's changed is the fact that if somebody gives $2,500 to their campaign, that allows other candidates to go to $500, and they still have to stay at the $250 limit. That's what the Supreme Court has knocked down. So, no matter what happens, we'll just say we go to $5. As long as everybody does $5, then that would be sufficient.
That's correct.
Okay.
And do you know from your famous city clerk list serve, how, I mean, the findings, I think, in the municipal code are still important, which is, it's the policy of the city to protect the integrity of the electoral process. Local government should serve the needs and respond to the wishes of all citizens equally with regard to their wealth.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so, our policy objective is no less, maybe watching the gubernatorial election right now, is even more underscores how critical it is that there be some mechanism to not allow elections to be, I mean, the Supreme Court struck down our asymmetries, but to allow folks with large amounts of personal wealth to overrun the democratic process. Are there other, are other cities, who are obviously dealing with the same Supreme Court decision, looking at other responses and options?
Well, surprisingly, I've yet to find any other cities that were dealing with the same Supreme Court decision. I did check with other cities who have campaign limits, and the majority of them just have a flat limit that applies to all the candidates regardless, and that they don't have any limit on the expenditure of personal funds. The city of Roseville, right now, has on the books an overall expenditure limit, but that's not been challenged, and we're not sure how that would hold up if it were to be challenged.
So, the $2,500, what constitutes the $2,500? And that must be something in statute.
No, that's not in statute. That was set by council when the ordinance was first developed years ago.
We could go to $5,000 before anything's triggered. Or you can go to $50,000 before anything is triggered.
You could go to, you could set your own limits as to what the trigger would be, but the trigger has to be that the limits would be raised for everybody and not just everybody except the person who donated the money to themselves. Because ultimately, everybody has to have the same contribution limit.
Right.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, there's, I did a little bit of research on this and came across a staff report from the city of Lancaster. This is 2008. They looked at a similar thing, and maybe the city attorney can correct me, but my impression is that, my understanding is that you cannot limit expenditures, and we've just seen the recent Supreme Court decision that addressed that square on with independent expenditures. The cities have the authority to limit the amount of the contributions as long as it's symmetrical, not asymmetrical. But setting the contribution limit too low can also open the city up to a question, because I think the courts recognize that people need to be able to run a competitive race in their districts. So, the issue would be whether or not 250 is too low as far as, you know, individual contributions. As far as capping expenditures, I'm not sure that would pass muster. So, I think that's kind of what we're looking at. Part of the problem with having expenditures or the contribution limit low, and this has been recognized by the courts, is that it really makes it difficult for non-incumbents to enter races. And I think, you know, for the public, it's beneficial to encourage people to run for city council and not have this as a discouragement. So, what you want to do is allow people to raise money. Of course, you don't want, you know, people to just come in and buy the election, but you also need to make sure that the contribution limit is high enough that recognizes the cost of campaigns. And I know in this city, campaigns are $30,000 to $60,000. And what happens, and we've seen this in the last couple of elections, and we're going to see it in November, on the national scale or national stage, that the money, and this is a debate that's going throughout the country, the money is going to be spent regardless. If it's not spent in a candidate's campaign, it's going to be spent in an independent expenditure campaign. And that's where you see the dirt and all the mud flying. And I know during the last election, Obama was trying to focus money going into his campaign to basically be responsible for that. So, by setting the contribution limit too low, I think what that does is encourage independent expenditure campaigns, which really, I haven't seen that they're really good for, good for the public, because there's no accountability. You know, the issues tend to be, you know, with tax on either side, they don't tend to, you know, be responsible. So, I mean, I would vote for increasing the limit, the $250 to some amount, and certainly, I'd like a discussion on what that amount would be. This Lancaster report also has a listing of all the cities that have contribution limits. Many don't have limits. You know, many are between 100. I'm not sure what Davis is now, but Davis is down at 100. Sacramento's 900 in this list. So, there are a number of cities that do have limits, but also a number of cities that don't have limits. And so, those are my comments on the issue so far.
Are you the author of this? Not this asymmetry piece. I think I, I, I mean, in the history of, we've only had one election with significant independent expenditures. I mean, there's been, you know, expenditures of under $1,000 for years and years and years. But I mean, to be honest, the last one was the only one where there was a lot of money being spent independently in the most recent decade, you know, since the blue-flu period. So, and it's also been a period in which we've had the highest levels, except for the very first election in 1987, or 1987. So, in the last couple of years, we've had the most amount of personal spending by far, more than all the rest of the elections combined from the 10 years prior. So, and there are not a lot of trends here, but definitely, there's, I mean, the last election wasn't pretty, I think, from anybody's perspective. I mean, definitely the candidates, but also just the whole, you know, the whole way. Everything that we say that is in the law that we wrote before about the influence of money and the need for these kinds of ordinances, if anything, a big acclamation point has been put on it in the last, in the last election cycle. So, I don't know what the answer is. I don't, I mean, I just, just raising or lowering the limits, I don't, I mean, I'm still uncomfortable with that, because you still have the same challenge. I mean, part of the reason for the limits changing, if somebody were to, we say $2,500, but that's not what's been happening. If somebody was to give their own campaign $20,000 or $30,000, the point here was, as much as anything, to say, well, the other candidates ought to have at least a chance to go out and ask for some money from supporters to be able to, to be able to defend themselves and to be able to, you know, run credible campaigns. Because, you know, when I first ran, a campaign for city council cost $10,000, and today, it's a $40,000 enterprise for many candidates. And that's, I mean, that's in a very short period, that's in a decade. But, I mean, that was the idea, at least in part. Yeah, there was the asymmetry, which was intended to be a disincentive to somebody saying, "I'm going to spend a huge amount of my own personal wealth." But then there was also the saying, "Look, the 250 is an unfair constraint on the other candidates who are trying to play by the rules that we've said that there ought to be some fair ground." So, I like the trigger idea still, I think, even if the asymmetry is not allowed under the court ruling.
So, you're saying that you would do away with the court ruling?
Well, I would, but I mean, but you can't. But you can't, right? No, I'm not saying that. So, we, I mean, we can still, you still can, it can still be the case that if, if we, whatever the trigger is, and we picked $2,500 because it was 10, we said, "Look, if somebody's going to put 10 times the contribution limit in, then that ought to have consequences." So, we could still have that and say that the limit is still going to go from 250 to 500 for every, but it would have to be for everyone.
But it would have to be for everybody.
Including for that candidate.
Including for the candidate.
Right.
That's right.
But frankly, typically, those candidates aren't that good at fundraising. They don't, they're putting money in because they don't have as many supporters.
Does it, this in no way alters independent expenditures, though. I mean, there's, there's, I don't know of any way you can do that.
We, I think we actually have one of the very few ordinances in the state that tries to do something about independent expenditures, in that we limit the, we limit, we limit contributions into independent expenditure committees. We can't, if you personally say, "Bill Kristoff, I'm going to spend $100,000 on a city race," we can't say no. But if Jeff Mitchell sets up a committee to launch an independent expenditure, we have said, "No, Bill Kristoff, you can only contribute $250 to that committee."
Correct.
And we're one of the few jurisdictions that has come up with that.
Yeah.
But we can't limit the total independent expenditure. That's not constitutional.
And that almost becomes a reason, because...
Absolutely. I think you're right. No, I mean, Chris, I mean, if you're looking for a direction, I mean, I think that, you know, it's something. And so, you know, I mean, if, you know, I keep hearing...
Are you thinking that the dollar amounts would then stay the same?
I probably would kick it up to $500. You know, I mean, that's probably what I would, let somebody, you know, I mean, if somebody's going to put in $2,500, then the other people ought to be able to try to match that somehow with a $500 check rather than a $250 contribution. And at the same time, I think that, I don't know how you're going to, it's, we're really just going in circles. This doesn't do what I think true campaign finance reform is. It really, it really doesn't do it, you know? And so, we're just, we're chasing our tail, but that's, hey, the way it is. And so, you know, we can write something down.
All right, I definitely wouldn't lower the 2,500, because once we're saying it applies to the candidate themselves, we don't want to create an incentive for candidates who may have, you know, 10 developers and five corporations and three PACs who are more than happy to write them a $500 check but can't, and the candidate says, "Well, I'll just write myself a check for 2,500, and then suddenly, that's going to qualify me for all this money from all these other people." So, it's a very delicate balance that we're trying to get, you know, to deal with, to try to make the incentives work as best we can, given the court, the court decision.
And then, I think, as Marcus, right, if you lowered it to, if...
know, it's probably going to be in the light of what you've put down here.
So still have the trigger, but make--
You're going to have to have, yeah, you'd still have the trigger. And, but, I mean, it would have to be an equal amount of money that everybody can spend, including the person that put their own funds in. You know, it's not the, it's not the perfect system, but, I mean, I think that, you know, it's something. And so, you know, I mean, if, you know, I keep hearing--
Are you thinking that the dollar amounts would then stay the same?
I probably would kick it up to $500. You know, I mean, that's probably what I would let somebody, you know, I mean, if somebody's going to put in $2,500, then the other people ought to be able to try to match that somehow with a $500 check rather than a $250 contribution. And at the same time, I think that, I don't know how you're going to, it's, we're really just going in circles. This doesn't do what I think true campaign finance reform is. It really, it really doesn't do it, you know? And so we're just, we're chasing our tail, but that's, hey, the way it is. And so, you know, we can write something down.
Right, I definitely wouldn't lower the 2,500, because once we're saying it applies to the candidate themselves, we don't want to create an incentive for candidates who may have, you know, 10 developers and five corporations and three PACs who are more than happy to write them a $500 check but can't, and the candidate says, "Well, I'll just write myself a check for 2,500, and then suddenly, that's going to qualify me for all this money from all these other people." So it's a very delicate balance--
It is.
--that we're trying to get, you know, to deal with, try to make the incentives work as best we can, given the court decision.
And then I think, as Marcus right, if you lowered it to, if you wrote a $2,500 check, but yet at the same time, you said, "Well, everybody can only then seek contributions of $5," then I think it goes, it really goes the other way. And so I, you know, I don't know how that does any good either.
Davis still does have $100, but, I mean, to be frank, Davis has, and even though Davis is bigger, you know, 80% of the people in Davis, you know, get involved in politics and write checks, and we're just not that, we're, you know, our people here are doing other things with their lives than pay attention to every election and that level of detail. Right, or going to city council till 2:00 AM. So it's just, you can raise, you can raise a lot of money, and Davis had $100 per contribution just because so many people are writing checks, and they just have higher levels of campaign involvement and of wealth than we have. So I, and the $100 is, they make it work, but I don't think that works for us.
Okay.
Do you have sufficient feedback?
Sounds like you just want to keep the dollar amounts the same, but the trigger would be with that everybody's contribution amount is increased to $500.
Yeah.
I would say that, from my perspective, I would say if somebody puts in 2,500, then it would trigger a $500 contribution from anybody else, including the candidate that did that. That's where I would come from.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right. That brings us to Council Calendar. Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to remind the council that tomorrow is the groundbreaking for the transit center, and that's going to be at 11:45. The festivities will take place here in the Galleria, and then we'll go across the street to actually turn some dirt and have a photo opportunity.
Is that 11:45 at here?
11:45 here at City Hall, okay. And then this weekend, Saturday, is the three-on-three basketball tournament involving the police, fire, and recreation departments.
Any questions on the calendar? City manager report?
Just want to call your attention to a memo regarding FEMA and the attached letter that, from the senators, who are advocating essentially our interests in the area of zones for flood protection, the A-99 and AR zones. And so that's some information that is different than what we've had in the past. We don't know exactly what it means, and we'll be spending some time at cap to cap trying to get some clarification from headquarters before we have to meet in May with the regional office.
All right, questions on the city manager report? City attorney report?
Nothing to report.
Staff direction for members of the council? Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, Toby, quickly, can you give us the status of road repairs on Sacramento Avenue between Harbor and Jefferson? Not tonight, but--
I'm just trying to, between Harbor and Jefferson--
Between Harbor and Jefferson and Sacramento. Just what is going to be scheduled there? Thanks.
Mr. Kristoff?
Same thing Katie called. I just wanted to try to find it.
All right, and we have no future agenda requests? Mr. Beers moves. Mr. Kristoff seconds. Does the meeting adjourn? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing done. Motion carries.